Welcome to the Eagle County School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, November 12th, 2025. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Welcome, thank you to everyone that's here tonight. We're going to start with the consent agenda. This is items of a routine and non-controversial nature. An item may be removed from the consent agenda by any member on the Board of Education and considered separately. This is an action item. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Lou and Juan. Natalia?
Ms. Alter?
Aye.
Ms. Qualman?
Aye.
Ms. Glouaki?
Aye.
Ms. Hovey?
Aye.
Mr. McQueeney?
Aye.
Mr. Peña?
Aye.
Ms. Tivarcunus?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam President. All right, let's get the presentation up here on the on the screens and I'll jump in. All right, thank you very much. Hey, look at that. I wanted to show you a picture of Eagle Valley Middle School last night, Aurora Borealis, from Melissa, thank you, she left the room, but she sent me that picture last night. Pretty incredible to see such beautiful northern lights over our community. Pretty unusual, but I wanted to start with that because it's pretty amazing. All right, some celebrations. I know it's not Veterans Day, but we're not far away, so I did want to take a moment to acknowledge the veterans in our community, those who have served, served our country, appreciate their service. I know that many of our schools have hosted veterans in this week and last week who came in and spoke about their service and duty to country, so happy Veterans Day. We have a lot of fall sports to celebrate in our high schools. We still have volleyball teams from Battle Mountain and Eagle Valley High School football that are entering the playoffs. Eagle Valley is going to host a football playoff game this Friday at 7:00, so pretty excited for that. That's an unusual opportunity in our community to host football playoffs, so good to see that. We almost, we almost had Battle Mountain versus Eagle Valley boys' soccer playoff game. One point away from making that happen, that would have been outstanding, but Battle Mountain Soccer did advance to quarterfinals and that was the end of their run. We had some golfers and some cross-country runners in the top 10 in the state, so tremendous outcome from our athletes this fall. Very excited to see those successes, want to champion the athletes and their coaches. I want to say congratulations to our new Board of Education officers. You may notice people sitting in some different chairs up here. So congratulations to Lilia for taking the gavel. I think you're going to enjoy this chair and we all have faith in you. Lucila Tivarcunus will take over as Vice President in your absence and Harry, I believe, has taken over as Secretary Treasurer. So we got some new roles and want to welcome Rachel Glouaki. I know this is not your first meeting. You had a meeting last week, but this is the first one at the diocese in front of the big group, so happy to have you on the team as well.
Thank you.
This weekend, we are hosting a speech and debate tournament and it's going to be co-hosted actually between Battle Mountain and Eagle Valley, one day at Battle Mountain, one day at Eagle Valley. Those teams travel together and are cooperating on a home tournament. If you are interested in judging any rounds of speech and debate, it is an incredible experience. They could use the judges and if you want to see some of our best and brightest really demonstrate to you that our country and our community are in good hands, come and watch a speech and debate tournament. These kids are amazing. If you are interested in coaching, email me and I'll connect you with the coaches and get you the right information about when and where to show up to assist with speech and debate tournament. So let's move on to updates. Hiring has begun for Gypsum Elementary, or excuse me, Gypsum Early Learning Center. So if you've watched the construction down there on Valley Road, the building is taking shape and we hope to have classrooms open late winter. So already working on hiring for GELC, which we're looking forward to. We did, since our last meeting, we have seen a proposed budget from the governor. Of all the elements of state expenditures, everything was cut with the exception of K-12. So in that regard, we came out looking pretty good, but the state budget is in such bad condition that we're not coming out with a whole lot of new money. So because of that and because of declining enrollment, we have implemented a staffing freeze on the vacancies that we have right now. We will still hire some positions, but we're reviewing each one with the principals or with the department chairs to really determine the need and to make sure that it's an essential position. So just increase scrutiny on any of the vacancies that we have through the remainder of the year to try to tighten up our spending because we are anticipating a pretty tough budget cycle next year as enrollment continues to decline around the state. And finally, under updates, you may have heard, we have some new student clubs forming at a couple of our high schools. The introduction of Turning Point USA Clubs has been a hot topic in our community in the last few weeks. First and foremost, let me be clear, these clubs were initiated by students. They followed the established process, submitted appropriate applications and articulated missions that align with the expectations we have for any student-led organization. They are a reflection of exactly what we hope to cultivate in our schools, which is young people who think critically, who are engaged in their communities and who are willing to take initiative and lead. Our goal is to help students become thoughtful citizens and courageous leaders. That goal applies equally to students of every faith, political belief, gender and ethnicity. When we say we prepare students for life beyond high school, we mean we prepare them to participate in the real world, a world that values or should value open dialogue, civic engagement, and the ability to engage respectfully across differences. I think it's also important to acknowledge the legal framework that supports this decision. Under the Equal Access Act of 1984, public schools that accept federal dollars, like ours, and allow any non-curricular student clubs cannot discriminate based on the content of a group's faith or political beliefs, not to mention the First Amendment of the United States Constitution, which protects the right of individuals to free speech and peaceful assembly, says the former civics teacher. As a public institution, we're bound and proud to uphold those rights. But I want to be equally clear on this point. We would make the same decision even if the law didn't require it. Supporting student initiative, protecting expression, and encouraging civil discourse are core to who we are as educators. Our goal is not to tell students what to think, it's to teach them how to think and to do so with courage, curiosity, and respect. At the end of the day, these are students and we will have adults in the room to monitor. Each of these clubs will operate under the supervision of an adult sponsor, a staff member employed at the respective high school. The sponsors will not receive stipends for these roles because these are voluntary, non-curricular clubs. Those sponsors are there to help guide, support, and ensure that all activities remain consistent with district rules and policies. Let me also address what happens if those standards aren't met. Any discussions that promote violence or disruption to the learning environment will not be tolerated. Engaging in speech or behavior that insults or threatens others in the school or their community will not be tolerated. Specifically, any discussions that demean immigrants, people of color, or any member of the queer community will not be tolerated. Those types of incidents will prompt an immediate process of reflection and coaching. We're educators and always treat mistakes as an opportunity to learn and grow, or as we call it in Eagle County Schools, a culture of revision. And if a club cannot or will not operate within school and district expectations, it'll lose the privilege of meeting on campus. That's the same standard we hold for all student organizations without exception. Ultimately, what these students are asking for is a chance, a chance to demonstrate a more productive and civil way to have public discourse than what society has modeled for them. They have said they want to engage in conversation, not confrontation. That's what we teach, that's what we expect, and that's the opportunity we'll provide. So let's allow them to show us what they can do. Let us model the same openness and respect that we ask of our students every day, because if we truly believe in preparing them to lead, we must also be willing to let them practice leadership, even if it challenges our comfort. Thank you, Madam President. That's it for my comments.
Thank you, Superintendent Qualman. Next up on the agenda is board reports. Mr. McQueeney, would you like to start us off?
Sure. Little busy over the past few weeks since we met last. Had a safety committee with Tad Deegan. Unbelievable the work that he's been doing in our district and keeping our schools and everything safe. It's just amazing all the little, or how much he's done with such little money. We do have bond money that can pay for things, but he's been very frugal in radios in all the schools and all the teachers' hands. One of the things he wanted to just remind everybody is about Safe to Tell. Use that, you know, you hear something, you're worried about something, talk to somebody. If you're not going to talk to a principal or a teacher or someone of authority, you can always go to Safe to Tell and be anonymous. The other committee I went to was the LRC Committee and learned a lot about all the holdings we have as a district, which is really cool. It's amazing how much land we do own and what we can do with that land. So it's going to be interesting learning more about that. Did go to the Veterans Day Assembly over at Freedom Park. We had, Battle Mountain had their drum line and their chorus there. Holy cow, two unbelievable, I mean, there were probably 15 to 20 students in each. Some doubled up, but man, they were really impressive. That was fun to watch. Finally, in our notes from just the things that we approved earlier in the consent agenda, I just wanted to point out a couple of things that our tech insurance, you save us a whole bunch of money there, Jack, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And it looks like we have a new logo for the Gypsum Early Learning Center. Thanks, Matt. That's all I have.
Thanks, Harry. Ms. Tivarcunus?
Thank you. I actually don't have much of a report, but I just want to take the chance to welcome Rachel to our board. And I want to say I'm looking forward to getting the work done with you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Mr. Peña?
Hello. Can you hear me now?
All right. Let's see here. So I too went to the meeting with Harry and the Safety Council meeting. It was good and got to see a lot of the progress that Tad has done for us, which is awesome. So thank you a lot for that. I was able to attend a field trip with the Red Hill Elementary at the Valar Center. It was pretty cool. I don't know if you guys remember the Magic School Bus, but the Magic School Bus was lost in space and the kids loved it.
I loved it.
It was awesome. So we did get to do that. You know, I was sitting at home the other day and my wife goes, "What's that in the backyard?" I go, "I don't know." And I go, "What do you think it is?" "I don't know, I just can't tell what it is." I go, "By golly." I think the playground's going up at the, at the, in the early learning center. And she goes, "No way." And I go, "Well, it looks like swings to me in a playground." And she's like, "Oh wow, it is so, it's coming along." It's pretty cool. You know, and see the playground's coming up, you see the employee housing coming up and, you know, you see there's, there's always work going on and it's moving pretty quick. It's pretty amazing to see. Thank you for getting the bike path open before school started. That was a huge issue with that neighborhood and we were able to walk to school now. You know, so that's good. I did get to see some of the kids finish their last high school sports as, you know, in volleyball and I did get to miss the Eagle Valley game, which was sad because it went out to a shootout and I was looking for the rivalry that was going to happen. But last I want to say is yesterday was Veterans Day, so thank you to all the veterans. You know, without you guys, we wouldn't be able to be here doing what we need to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Juan. Ms. Hovey?
Um, you all have given excellent board reports, so actually I'm not going to take up too much time, but I, yes, also want to say, Rachel, so excited to have you here. And also to Lilia and Lou and Harry, thank you for stepping into, this is really loud. Thank you for stepping into leadership roles. I greatly appreciate it. So I know it's extra time on top of an already demanding position, so thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. Ms. Alter?
I too will try to be brief. I talk quick. Couple things, Apple nominations are live, so nominate your teachers. First awards are going to be going out, I think, starting tomorrow for October's award. So I had a finance committee last night with Brison Beaver and, yeah, the budget is like Superintendent Qualman said, the budget is tight, things are not great at the state level. And we were, you know, I'm looking at the budget, early childhood takes quite a bit of money out of the general fund. Obviously, we all think early childhood is incredibly important and our community really needs it. And I guess I'm sort of shouting out to the Eagle County Commissioners, because I know that's a big initiative of theirs. And I think that early childhood is a community effort that should not necessarily fall exclusively on the school district. It takes about $3 million out of our general fund and things are really, really tight. So I'm just making a call to those county commissioners to help us out a little bit. I know it's really important to them. So, yeah, email your county commissioner. Sorry, Harry. And with that, I'll move on.
I'll email her, don't worry.
Thank you, Kelly. Ms. Glouaki?
Well, hello. I just want to say thank you for the warm welcome. I do not have a board report yet, but I am going to be going to the duck meeting next week, so maybe next month I'll have a report for y'all.
Thank you, Rachel. I have a few quick things. I attended the Land Resource Committee meeting and the Finance Committee meeting and I wanted to say thank you to all the community members that are involved in both of those committees and then the many committees that we have. There's so much knowledge in this community and I'm so grateful that so many of the community members use their time and energy to help out the school district. The next thing is, everyone kind of mentioned this, but Election Day was last week and with it came a lot of exciting changes to our board. First, I want to thank each and every one of you for being here. I'm honored to serve with all of you. Gretchen and Juan, thank you for running for another term and continuing your dedication to the district. We're thrilled to welcome Rachel. You'll be representing District G, so you have some big shoes to fill. We're all going to miss Dan, but thank you for stepping up to serve your community. We're really excited to have you here with us. I also want to recognize our new board officers. Harry, thank you for serving as Secretary Treasurer. And Lou, thank you for taking on the role of Vice President. I'm happy and proud to serve alongside all of you. And along with the district leadership team, I want to say thank you. I appreciate all the time and effort and heart each of you brings to your role. And I know it's not always easy and it often requires the support and understanding of your family, friends and neighbors to be at all these meetings and to do all the things that you need to do to help our district. So thank you to everyone that makes, that makes all this possible. Finally, I want to extend my thanks to McPherson and Jacobson for being here during work session to begin coordinating the upcoming superintendent search. And thanks to everyone in our community who took the time to take the online survey about the hiring process. We're really fortunate to have an engaged and thoughtful community that takes an active role in shaping the future of our district. So thank you all for your support of our students, staff and community. And with that, we are on to public participation. Let's see, do we have blue cards tonight?
We do. We have two blue cards. Just a reminder that the, one more coming. You have three minutes to state whatever you need to state. We'll just mix them up and call one person up at a time. There is one of these mics up there and on the right-hand side, there's a little person, looks like they're talking. Make sure you press that and it's red so everybody can hear you. Otherwise, let's have Krista Kaiser from Battle Mountain in EBS.
Okay. Well, first of all, thanks, Mr. Qualman, for sharing your ideas and the thoughts and the law about the clubs. But I am here this evening to commend the district for sharing the school policy about clubs and want to say thank you for announcing by law, the Turning Point chapters at both Eagle Valley and Battle Mountain have been approved. This truly is exciting for the young people that chose to come together as like-minded students. To have a club to go to, to share openly, to think critically, to discuss thoroughly and debate ideas and values is a wonderful opportunity for these high schoolers. I also would like to stand here tonight and thank the staff members that chose to listen and stand up for the young people that came and requested an adult to be the advisor of these clubs. These adult, these adults took on an extra responsibility, only to get ridiculed by many in the community before the clubs were even approved and met. To be honest, there was a certain amount of bullying by adults and hatred swirling around on the internet on Veil Moms Classifieds of all places. The visceral response from those whose beliefs align differently are quite shocking and to be honest, are rather disturbing. Sadly, in case the board is unaware, the discussion proceeded to take a turn for the worse when a colleague of Mr. Bueno, the Battle Mountain Club Advisor, thought it was appropriate to call out her fellow teacher by name online in a way that one side does not want to be treated. And yet she felt privileged to spew her opinions and beliefs, all while tearing Christopher down and now placed a certain amount of fear in the students that came forward to request such a club. Don't get me wrong, everyone is entitled to their opinion. However, a professional taking an attack on social media while the other was simply trying to explain and actually diffuse the misinformation and calm those with misplaced fear without having to do so, he did not, he needed to do that, was somewhat defamed online by this other teacher. Not sure about the policy for this incident in the district, but it does make me wonder. I do not know Christopher Bueno, I do not know the other advisor for the Eagle Valley High School, but a big thank you to supporting the minority in this valley, as it is hard to stand up against the louder voices. For example, the louder voice spoke clearly with what I would consider hate speech and stepped on many of my personal values in life. We can agree to disagree, but please listen to the list of descriptive words, phrases I acquired from the Veil Daily article post on Facebook about the Turning Point chapter starting legally. This is words that were for supporters. Bigoted misogynist, racist bigot, racist, fake, a joke, you're the problem, twisted murals, burn in hell.
We have to stay to our three-minute time limit. I appreciate that.
There's only three speakers, but you should see the comments that were there.
You can give us a note and it will be distributed to all the members of the
Thank you. And I really appreciate how you talked about clubs. Don't do hate speech. This is adults.
Thank you, Ms. Kaiser.
I also have a great article. I don't know if I'm allowed to give you things, because that was your knocking out the voice. Thank you.
Our next person will be Lisa, or Linda Beckett, from Gypsum.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to say the same thing to the board. Thank you so much for upholding the Equal Access Act, which defends students' rights to form clubs and is the law. So appreciate that with this example that's happened with the Turning Point USA chapters. I, I'm thankful for teachers like Christopher Brute, I don't know how to say his last name, Bueno, Bruno, who understands that his role as an educator is to encourage the growth and learning of students. I just want to kind of point out, I think the way I saw, and I'm not really on Facebook except for just to kind of examine these sort of things. I think Facebook can be crazy, like it turned out to be. But it just seemed like it started that parents were just proud of their schools that their children were going to. They were posting happiness about, hey, this is what my kid's doing, like you would, you know, they went to prom and here's the picture, or just kicked a great field goal and look at what, you know, look at what my kid just did. And then it came, became something that was just described very well from the last speaker. So, yeah, I hated to see that happen. The last time I was at a meeting, we were talking about a teacher at VSSA. That was very unfortunate what that person said in the presence of students and I just, I guess it's, it's teachers like this that kind of give you guys a hard job. And I'm assuming that the female teacher who was on Facebook stating these things, that this person is involved in some kind of HR help of rehabilitating that conduct. So that is my hope, that that's being worked out. And then I just want to say for the record, you know, I'd like, I'd like to point out for anyone who isn't here that might be watching this at a later time, there's a difference between school-sponsored clubs and student-sponsored clubs. And so there's many types of clubs, academic, art, hobbies, sports. And I want to just take a moment to share some school-sponsored clubs that exist across our nation and even in this school district. These are more special interest groups, but I think it's interesting to point out, there's Students Against Climate Change, Black Student Association, Hispanic and Latino Student Association, Pride Club, Gender and Sexuality Alliance. So I want to point those out because those are school-sponsored. But I want to say the difference is that Turning Point USA is a student-sponsored club, not a school-sponsored club. And I also just want to point out that Turning Point USA stands for limited government, individual freedom, and free markets, and has expressed these values with very open-minded and peaceful discussion. Thank you. Have a good night.
And unless anybody else has a blue card out there, our last one will be Tim from Chicken Man. Nice to see you, Tim.
Tim McMahon, Avon. Thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. Just a few things to bring up. What do we have to do so that in the spring we can have voter registration drives to the high schools? Maybe you guys can get me in contact with the high school deputy registrars at the high schools. I just learned about that. Apparently, at a very high school, there's already a person there that's supposed to be certified to do voter registration at any time when the school's open. So, you know, anything I can do with that. Also, let's see, in the last few weeks, a bunch of students, parents and a few teachers reached out about Turning Point coming to the schools. As much as I disagree with a lot of what they say, this is America and they have a right to free speech. The reason I bring this up is that, sorry, in the time I've been coming to these meetings, I've noticed some things. Most of the time, I'm the only parent here, even though my son doesn't go to the school district. There's a lack of parents attending these meetings and actively participating in their child's education. I'm not saying to go to all of them, but maybe have one person in your group of friends go and they can report back to the rest. This brings me to my next point, staying for the whole meeting. Majority information related to your child's education is not in public comment, but later on. In the few meetings where there are other parents or students present, act In the few meetings where there are other parents or students present, act they get up and say what's going wrong in the schools or how the district is messing up during public comment, they leave. I've attended over 200 meetings in the last three years, town council, court transit, county commissioners, and the school board. And besides when I'm doing a hat-trick with Avon at five, Eagle at six, and Gypsum at seven, I stay for the whole meeting. I'm not saying to follow my lead, budget meetings definitely suck, but when it comes to your child's education, I would think you would want to be as involved as possible. That's just to my two cents, which I guess would now be a nickel since they stopped making pennies, so.
That's it for public comment.
Thank you, Harry, and thank you to everyone that came to speak to us tonight. We appreciate the input. Next on the agenda is new and old business. So we have some tentative topics included in the agenda for next board meeting. Board self-assessment, ballot measure discussion, budget work session. Bryson and Shelley will both be here. Habitat for Humanity. Does anyone have anything else they would like to propose? No?
We usually do like 15 minutes debrief about our CASB sessions and, you know, what, I mean, we usually take some time to talk about that. I don't know if you guys feel like that's necessary, but I always enjoy just hearing what other, what everybody thinks about it.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Okay, if there are no additional topics, there is a change to the December board meeting date. The Board of Education's December meeting has changed from Tuesday, December 9th, and shifted to the usual Wednesday, December 17th. So that's just a notice for everybody. And then we will move on to policy revisions and adoptions, a special policy update by Mr. Qualman and Dr. Jarno.
All of these policies fall under the instructional world, so Dr. Jarno's going to cover these.
So, yes, we have several policy revisions and adoptions in the instructional category, which is the I series of policies. And basically, these are all just updates to things that we had previously, clarifications, simplifications, and so they're all listed for you. IJ, instructional resources and materials. The changes to this basically just strengthens the Board of Education input and clarifies the role of the board in selecting instructional resources and materials. Policy IJL, library resource selection, adoption, and reconsideration. And basically, this, the changes here separate it from curricular materials. So, curricular materials and library materials used to sort of be lumped together, and they're two very different things, especially in the ways in which our libraries are evolving and not the necessarily hardback, brick-and-mortar libraries that we always used to love and know. IKF, graduation requirements. It really didn't change our credits from 24 to 25, there was a typo. So, that change was made back in 2020, and there was just a typo in the policy, so we needed to clarify that. We still have two tracks, we have a regular diploma, and then we do have in our policy a college prep diploma. Our counselors have talked about wanting to do something on the actual diploma to differentiate those. It's really kind of irrelevant if kids are planning to go to college, they need to take the foreign language and the extra credits that are in the college prep diploma anyway. So we really haven't had a big push to differentiate those on the actual diploma. Let's see, sorry. IKF, graduation requirements. So the change here was including the capstone information and making sure that we update the cut scores. So this is that menu of options that we have, that in addition to our graduation requirements, it's the college and career ready requirement. So it's the ACT, SAT, ASVAB, work keys, all of those things. And then as part of that, we also have capstone projects. And so in our district, our capstones really focus on our special education students and our ELD students. And then finally, KEC is public concerns about instructional materials, and it really just updated that and clarified some of the language, just made it much easier to look at and understand. Some of our policies in the past have been a little bit convoluted and wordy, and so we get all of our input from CASB, as you know, and so they have gone to some effort to make sure things are a little more clarified and a little simpler to understand for our public. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Jarno. This is an action item, so if there are no further questions, would anyone like to make a motion?
Move to approve the renovations to the following policies as presented IJ, instructional resources and materials, IKF, graduation requirements, and KEC, public concern about instructional materials. I think we have to do them both separately.
Second.
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Ms. Glawaki?
Aye.
Ms. Hovey?
Aye.
Mr. McQueeney?
Aye.
Mr. Penya?
Aye.
Ms. Steve Arquinos?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
I also move to adopt the following new policies as exhibits as presented is IJL, library resource selection, adoption, and reconsideration, and IKF-E, graduation requirements, chart of approved measures and cut scores by graduation.
Second.
Thank you again, Harry and Gretchen. Natalia? Ms. Alter?
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Ms. Glawaki?
Aye.
Ms. Hovey?
Aye.
Mr. McQueeney?
Aye.
Mr. Penya?
Aye.
Ms. Steve Arquinos?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody, and I'll add, there were two different motions there. One is revisions to existing policies and the other was new policies, so that's why there were two. Next, we have parent engagement stocktake from Matt and Eric. And Eric, thanks for being here.
They were here anyway.
I just want to say that I disagree with Tim. Everybody loves budget meetings, and when we're done here, Bryson has a few things, we're going to turn it over to him. But first, the parent engagement stocktake. So we do this presentation pretty much every year, it feels like, and a lot of times it feels a little recycled, so we wanted to focus on some updates and some changes, actually. Can I open the... Am I controlling this? All right, just go to slide four if you could, Natalia. I just want to show, basically, our goal is really to utilize technology to increase engagement across our community. And earlier, the elementary schools were here, and Mitch was talking about his parent engagement. I always think it's very different at the school level to engage with parents than it is for us at the district level, and so it's just a slightly different, you know, arena. So we've been embracing technology. One new thing that we have been using, and I guess Natalia, if you want to slip to, switch to the other tab, the Wordly tab, you guys have probably noticed on this back screen for the last three, four, or five months, we've been showing translation in Spanish for our visitors and the public. I'm going to let Eric talk a little bit about this as well and then do a little demonstration to show you guys how it works. There's a lot of areas where we can continue to grow this technology as well. Since we've started, we've limited it to the board meetings, but in the superintendent discussion today, we were talking about having different parent meetings and stuff. There are one-on-one applications, so it's something we're growing with and learning as we go. But with that, I'm going to let Eric kind of show you how it works.
All right, thank you, Matt. And, yeah, just like Matt said, we have been mindful of language justice and language equality, so this AI software has provided us the ability to provide live interpretation for anybody that comes to our board meetings, not only in Spanish, but in other languages. Así que se los voy a demostrar y voy a hablar en español. Puedo tener una conversación con Lou, que habla español, si no te molesta Lou. Y bueno, platícame un poquito de tus hijos, ¿en qué grado están? ¿Ya están en secundaria, siguen en la primaria?
Bueno, tengo dos hijos. Nico tiene 11 años y va a la escuela en Eagle Valley Miro. Le gustan mucho los deportes, le gusta jugar al básquetbol, al béisbol, le gustan matemáticas y leer bastante. Y después lo tengo a mi hijo mayor, Tommy, que está, que es sophomore, iba a la escuela de Eagle Valley High School y está esperando que empiece a nevar porque a él le gusta esquiar mucho.
Ah, sí, qué bien, te iba a preguntar de Tommy. Y Tommy va en el mismo grado que Alexa.
Exactamente, van a, son compañeros desde, desde que eran muy chiquitos.
Sí, se pasa tan rápido, ¿verdad?
Mm-hmm, ya casi se acaba.
Okay, muchas gracias.
De nada.
So hopefully, that TV's on, right? So it's pretty cool, right? I mean, it's really neat how good this does. And we, when we went through the process of testing all these different softwares, we work with technology, we went through three or four different platforms. Wordly was by far the most accurate. There are some other things that, like I said, we're continuing to grow with it. We've got headsets that we can give out to folks, and Eric has set up a QR code so that people can sit and listen. Admittedly, we tested that yesterday, and we were going to give you all headphones. Still a work in progress, so we're working through it, but it is really, really cool. And like Eric said, and like we talked about earlier in that meeting with the superintendent search, I mean, we want to make that, you know, language equality across the board for everyone and really hopefully increase parent engagement. Which leads me to our second piece. Natalia, if you want to switch back. I don't know if you guys got a chance to see this or not, but on the final slide, I linked just four of our new social media reels. Over the summer, we purchased some new equipment and have started to create reels because I guess that's what everyone on social media likes. I kind of agree that Facebook isn't all that great, but you can engage with families in the community, and so that is really cool. So we have done, I made a quick list, we have done a video on Tad Deegan and our security measures. I think that might be our most watched. We had a mariachi band show up at Avon Elementary School a month or two ago, so we went up there and did a reel on that. We did three different videos on Dia de Muertos two weeks ago, I guess it was. We did a video on Mr. Kyle, our sign language interpreter at Eagle Valley Elementary School. And it's, first of all, they're just cool. I mean, they're fun to watch, but the engagement has increased on social media tremendously, and I'm going to let Eric talk to that.
Yeah, the videos, we've always noticed that posts that contain pictures are very engaging. Actually, our number one post is for the custodian appreciation day, where we have pictures of custodians, received over 11,000 views. But now we have reels, these 30-second, 40-second reels where we're telling the story with images and with sound and with music and with voiceovers. So, yeah, here's an example of the ones that we have produced.
And I'm not sure, that request access was not there earlier, so if you haven't gotten a chance, go back, check them out. If anyone in the room is a social media influencer, possibly in yellow, wearing yellow, and wants to share our videos on social media, boy, wouldn't that increase our engagement? Oh, there's the one. So this is actually our security one, highlighting Tad. And again, I mean, we are seeing exponential growth in the viewership through these social media posts, well over 10,000 views on a number of these videos, and it just continues to increase the viral nature of all of our social media. So just another way that we can increase that engagement. And I believe that, oh, the other thing that I wanted to talk about, we just also added some software to make our website more accessible as far as documents go, so we're meeting later this week to get that plugged into our website, and it will make every PDF on our website accessible for an e-reader. So for folks that are hearing or reading a pair that need to listen to, can't necessarily read the PDF, it'll be accessible, and that's the new law that went into effect over the summer, and we're just taking that next step to increase that accessibility and, again, hopefully increase engagement. So with that, we open it to any questions.
I do have a question. Was that part of the color Board of Education takeover on their social?
So that was, so that was kind of random. They reached out to us over the summer, but what we did when we took over their media, we did a post every hour on the hour, and we did one, like, static post and then one reel and flip-flop back and forth, and so Tad left. According to Tad, his video was the most viewed video ever on the CDE's website. I cannot confirm nor deny that. But to answer your question, yes, we, they basically gave us the keys to the car for a day, and we basically had the run of their social media platforms and shared a lot of these videos.
Yeah, that's cool. I knew they were allowing, we were going to do a takeover on one day, and I seen them keep coming.
Yeah, we've just been developing that relationship with them. We had Kendall as a Teacher of the Year finalist, and so that kind of helped, you know, that conversation, and it's just kind of grown from there, so they've been great to work with.
Very cool, thanks.
If there's nothing else, I'll leave it to Beaver.
Thank you, Matt and Eric.
You know, that was a great intro. That was an awesome intro.
So Bryson's going to start with approval of student fees.
Oh, I'll just put that on the floor. You guys better buckle up, we got an hour budget into this, and I'm going to try to get through it faster than that for all of our six. All right, student fees. So I have a proposed change, this would be effective immediately, it'd be for the current year fee schedule. This kind of popped up in the last few weeks. Battle Mountain Hockey Team has been notified that they will not have a local referee assigner for the upcoming season, so they'll have to be hiring in their referees from the front range, which is more costly. So the Battle Mountain High School AD and hockey coach have approached me requesting that hockey fees be increased from 850 to 900 for the upcoming season so that they can assess those in the next few weeks. So I'm here to request that that would be approved. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Thanks.
Are there any other sports that are looking at that same thing of, because I know officials are hard to find, but...
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard that from any ADs at this point, but we appreciate when the schools are taking initiative so that the schools aren't bearing even more cost on top of what we already bear, so.
For those unfamiliar with hockey and why that fee is so much higher than all the other sports, I think it's important to recognize that we do not own ICE facility in the school district, so anytime our team practices or plays, we have to rent ICE from various facilities in the county, so that's why it's one of our most expensive activities, yeah.
Also, Harry, that, the issue with the ref assigner is specific to hockey, so I don't anticipate seeing that in other sports.
Well, if anyone wants to start hockey ref training in the community, now's the time. Okay, this is an action item. If there are no more questions for Bryson on this one, would anyone like to make a motion? motion?
I move to approve student fees as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Lou. And Harry, Natalia?
Ms. Alter?
Aye.
Ms. Conlon?
Aye.
Ms. Glawaki?
Aye.
Ms. Hovey?
Aye.
Mr. McQueeney?
Aye.
Mr. Penya?
Aye.
Ms. Diwakunus?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Natalia, thank you, Bryson. Next, approval of monitoring report for governance policy EL eight fiscal management.
This is everybody's favorite segment, the quarterly reports. So this'll be the first quarter, so that'll cover July through September. And so they're a little less exciting than normal because we only have three months of data. So I'd remind the board and the public, as we're looking at these particularly early in the year, we're pretty much exclusively just looking at the pacing, so that will be the percent columns. So we wanna make sure that the revenue that we're bringing in is about where we were last year, is the percentage of our budget, and then that the expenditures aren't, we're not spending, you know, thirty percent of our budget through the first three months when last year we spent twenty percent. So this is kind of just a general health check on our budget to make sure that our spending and our revenue gathering is going well. On the first page, we have our general fund, which is the primary fund in which we operate. You can see that revenue's pacing really well, we're at eleven percent this year through September thirtieth, and last year we were at twelve percent. This slight decrease is attributable mostly to lower interest income as rates have gone down and we have less reserves sitting in our bank accounts, so we've earned a little bit less interest income. As well as, this year, we will be collecting through the School Finance Act more property taxes and less state funding. That's just kind of a function of how the School Finance Act works and how they fund it, they pretty much, we raise the maximum amount of property tax that we can by law, and then the state fills in the gap. And so as, as SES values have gone up, we're able to collect more tax and the state subsidizes us less. And the timing on that is that the state pays us monthly and taxes usually come in at the end of the year. So since we're bringing in more taxes, the timing on that's a little bit behind.
So can you just say that one more time for the community? We're bringing in more taxes locally through property taxes, but because it goes to the state and then comes back, that means that the school district does not have additional funds. Is that correct?
Correct. So if the school finance formula, say, would, would give us a cap and say, hey, you're allowed to, between taxes and the state, you're allowed to bring in eighty million for the year. If SES values goes up and we can bring in sixty-five this year versus sixty last year, we don't get to keep the extra five million, the state just contributes five million less. We're still capped at the eighty million. So revenues are looking great, expenses are also looking great, we're, last year at this time, we were at sixteen percent of our budget, we are also at sixteen percent. Salaries and benefits have been just a smidge lower, and some of our other areas have been a bit higher, but everything looks healthy from that standpoint. If you do look at the bottom of this page, you will see that based on our beginning fund balance, which was a little bit lower than we were hoping for, it shows that our ending fund balance for the year will be five point five million dollars. The district is actively working through hiring freezes to revise the budget in January, which is allowed by Colorado law, and to restore the ending fund balance for this year to between six point five and seven million, which was what the board approved at the end of last year. So we're in the process of doing that. Natalia, next fund, UPK. Preschool fund, revenue is at sixteen percent through the first three months versus nineteen percent last year. Not really a cause for concern here, there's a couple factors at play. We, at this time last year, just based on the timing of when our UPK payments come in from the state of Colorado, we had received one additional. So that should come in, that should catch up from a timing perspective. And then tuition, we are about a hundred thousand dollars over where we were last year due to a lot more offerings for infant toddler and preschool. But overall, for this year, our revenue budget's a lot larger with the opening of GELC in the spring, so we will catch up very quickly in the spring once that opens up. Expenditure-wise, we are also spending a little bit less than we had at this point last year. That's due to a few classrooms at ELC having a little bit of a delayed opening, and then again, it'll kind of be the same impact in the spring with GELC opening that we budgeted for all those positions in the spring. So we'll quickly catch that up once GELC opens in January. So everything's looking good for preschool fund. Next, nutrition service fund. We received the majority of our nutrition service fund revenue later in the year, so we've only received one percent of our budgeted amount, and that was the same as last year. I did want to address, we've had a few questions from the community about SNAP disruptions with the federal government. None of our pre, our nutrition service fund funding comes from SNAP, so we don't expect any impact to revenue this year from those disruptions, as all of our funding or the majority of our funding comes from Healthy School Meals for All, which was recently renewed by voters in the state of Colorado, so which is a good thing for us. So revenue, no concerns there. Expenditure-wise, we're one percent behind where we were last year, which is a good thing. We've seen salaries and benefits come in right around the same amount, and then we've seen a slight reduction in purchase services, but I'd expect that our pacing overall is about the same. Grant fund, we've received three million of the roughly nine point three that we've budgeted, and we'll continue to receive that as the year goes along. And then of the three million we've received, we've spent about one point one million of that. Some of that also just comes down to the grant accounting that we still have to do in our department, so everything is moving along great in the grant fund. Student Activity Fund, as a reminder to the board and to the public, the Student Activity Fund is where any fundraising dollars for clubs and sports go. Through the first three months, the Student Activity Fund has brought in a hundred and eighty grand, which is about forty grand higher than we had brought in last year, which is good, means fundraising efforts are going well for our clubs and for our athletic teams. On the expenditure side, we've spent about five grand more than we had at this point last year, but we've brought in a good bit more. So everything's looking fine there, and we'll continue to see clubs and teams spin those down as the year goes along. Transportation Fund, looks pretty much identical to last year. The only area revenue-wise that we are a bit higher is in local revenue, and that's due to our internal trip billing being a bit higher this year. I'd have to reach out to the transportation folks to see what exactly is going on there because we've left our rates the same, but maybe there's just more trips being used internally than, than last year. So that's, how, how that, how that mechanism works here is the transportation fund bills a school, say a school uses our buses for a field trip or for athletic event, the transportation fund is just internally billing them for that trip, and that's just how we account for it. So it's all still a district expense, but we account for it in that manner. On the expenditure side, we're right on track, spent seventeen percent of our budget thus far last year, we were at eighteen percent. And we've seen a pretty good bit of savings on repairs on our buses, so I think that contributes slightly to having newer buses, newer vehicles in our fleet. We've only spent about half on repairs as we had done at this point last year.
Didn't we change fuel too? Would that?
We've converted the majority of our buses to liquid natural gas, so that is providing some savings there as well.
Where would we see that?
That would be in supplies and equipment. So that, that particular line item's probably a little bit lower, but it's also, it's nineteen thousand dollars higher than last year, so there's probably some other supplies and equipment that have been a little bit higher than we were expecting. All right, Natalia, you can move to the next fund. All right, Bond Redemption Fund, pretty boring fund. We've brought in two percent of our tax revenue, and then we haven't spent anything. Our first bond payment will be December first, so we have that coming up for us. Building Fund, we've brought in about half the amount of interest revenue that we did last year, and that's again due to lower rates and having less funds, interest-bearing funds in our account because we've been spending those down actively over the last year. Construction projects is our main expenditure in this fund for GELC, ELC, and Malloy Park Infrastructure. And thus far, we've only spent nine hundred thousand versus two point one million last year, and this is purely timing. October, we had some really large bills come in, so when I present this next time, it will look very different, but that, the difference there is purely timing, so everything's looking good there, and as you can see, we have about seventy million left in that fund. Capital Reserve Fund, revenue, that, we have other local revenue there from when we sell some of our used equipment or vehicles, things like that, so we've done some nominal revenue in that front, if you could scroll down a little bit more, Natalia. We've spent six hundred and fifty thousand dollars thus far through the first three months on capital reserve projects. We had spent about five hundred and fifty thousand through this point last year, so right in the same ballpark, we've bought in some maintenance equipment and, let me see, Battle Mountain High School, we did some concrete work there, some flooring at Brush Creek, so those are the main projects that we've had going on thus far, and we'll continue to see those come in as the year goes along. Lastly, our Housing Fund. So don't be alarmed by the pacing numbers here, you would see, oh, well, we've only brought in one percent, and last year we had brought in twenty-one percent. That's kind of a misnumber there because we have a big contribution of building coming in, which when GELC is finished, we contribute the asset value of that building into the fund, it's just the way we account for it. It's not actual money that we can spend, it's just because you have to depreciate that asset you, you added in. So that twenty-three million will be added in in the spring once we finish the housing development there. As far as on the expense side, we're significantly lower than we were last year from a percentage standpoint, but we're about thirty thousand dollars higher on a gross spending standpoint, and most of that is due to higher master lease expense, because we have more master leased units this year than we did than last year. So everything's looking good there. And with that, that was a little quick masterclass there on all of our funds, but with that, I'll open it up to questions.
I wanted to say that this is a very detailed report on the budget, and there's always a lot of talk about financial transparency, and this is, is as transparent as I feel like you can get. So thank you so much for putting in the time and the effort to present this to us and the community. Does anyone, if anyone has any more questions, this is an action item, and we need a motion.
Thanks for dumbing it down for me. With that, I move to approve the monitoring report for governance policy EL eight fiscal management and the quarterly report.
Second.
Thank you, Juan and Harry. Natalia?
Ms. Alter?
Aye.
Ms. Conlon?
Aye.
Ms. Glawaki?
Aye.
Ms. Hovey?
Aye.
Mr. McQueeney?
Aye.
Mr. Penya?
Aye.
Ms. Diwakunus?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes unanimously.
All right, Bryson, there's more.
There's more, wait, there's more.
Update on Eagle County School District Fiscal Health Analysis, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four.
Perfect. Yeah, so this fiscal health analysis is performed by the Office of the State Auditor. You can kind of consider this a fiscal scorecard for the district, and they compare us against other districts, and they use a three-year rolling period so that we can kind of see as a trend how we've been doing as a district, so we're gonna work through some of these. So they've established six financial indicators to kind of compare us against, and they help us see how fiscally healthy we are. So you can go to the next one, Natalia. So try, I'll try to break this down and not get too in the math and try to make it understandable, so, but this is, this is a little dry. Okay, so our first ratio is the asset sufficiency ratio. It's, this measures the adequacy of our assets as a district to cover our obligations and our liabilities, so this is really saying, do we have enough assets to pay our bills, to cover our debts? If you go to the next slide, Natalia. So this ratio has two different criteria that the state has chose. They said that, one, the ratio should not consistently decrease over time, and it shouldn't go below one point oh, and it should not consistently remain below one point oh if you do go below one point oh. So you can see, from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four, we have seen a decreasing ratio, which is part of the spin-down of our fund balance, so our assets have been decreasing as we've spent our fund balance down to recruit and retain staff. So, but we've met this criteria, all of our years have been above one point oh, which means we have more than enough assets to cover our liabilities. The warning here would be that we are consistently decreasing, so it's something as a district that we do need to be paying attention to and be, you know, considerate of that we, as we draw our fund balance down, we do get closer to one point oh. The next formula is the debt burden.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
So if we push our fund balance back to where we want, like up at the ten million, would this rise back up to the two point two or?
Correct, it should, yeah. Yeah, fund balance is gonna be the main driver of that number. So the second formula we have here is the debt burden ratio, and this indicates whether our revenues are enough to pay our debt payments for the year, if you go to the next slide. So the two criteria that the state sets is that the ratio should remain constant or increase over a three-year period, and it should not go below zero or remain below zero. So this isn't looking at all of our revenue as a district, this is only looking at the revenue we raise in our bond fund, our Bond Redemption Fund. So this number will always be close to one because we're all, always only raising enough money to make our bond payments, and we try to do that to lessen the burden on the taxpayer. So we're only setting our mills high enough that if our bond payment is twenty-five million, we wanna raise twenty-five million and a hundred thousand, you know? So this number will be close to one, and we've been a little bit over one over the last three years, which is a good thing. So no concerns there. Our third ratio is the operating reserve ratio, and this looks at how much of our reserve, how much reserves we have, and if revenue were to stop today and we got no more money, how long we'd be able to cover our costs in the future. So the two different criteria, pretty much the state wants us to have at least one month of expenditures if our revenue were to dry up, which is eight point three percent of a year, point oh eight three. So they want us to be higher than that. Over the last three years, the lowest we've had was this last year, we had eleven percent versus eight percent. So again, this is a ratio that we've met our benchmarks, but it's constantly decreasing, and as we spend more of our fund balance down, it gets concerning, so it's another ratio that we need to continue to look at and be diligent with. Next ratio is OMR, operating margin ratio, and this looks at, for every dollar that we bring in in revenue, how much of that goes to our fund balance? Like, how much are we saving? So if we, if we brought in a dollar, are we saving two cents of that to the fund balance? Are we saving negative two cents of that to the fund balance? The ratio here and the criteria the state has set is, they, they kind of give us a caveat that it can fluctuate based on our budget decisions, and it, it does because we've been spinning our fund balance down, but they give the guidance that it should never, it shouldn't be consistently below zero. You can see, over the last two years, we did have one year where our ratio was positive, but overall, we've been spinning our fund balance down, so this number would be consistently negative as we aren't saving really any of our revenue to, and putting that towards fund balance. So again, it's, they don't really grade you on this one quite as much because there is a lot of fluctuation based on a district's budgetary priorities, but it's again, one that as we look at it, we need to be cognizant that kind of indicates that we don't have a sustainable funding model if we continue to spin that down. The next one, deficit fund balance ratio, we don't have any of our funds that are at a deficit fund balance, so this one doesn't apply to us, so you can go on to the sixth one. Last one, everybody stay awake for one minute, change in fund balance ratio formula, so this looks at the increase or decrease in the general fund, ending fund balance. So the criteria the state sets for this one is, pretty much it's letting us know that if it's consistently negative and we're continuing, continuously spinning our fund balance down, that that's not sustainable because money's running out. So you can see, every year for the last three years, we've been spinning our fund balance down, so they don't, again, kind of grade you on this, they're not like, oh, you failed this one, but they're kind of letting you know, like, hey, you need to, like, turn it around. So I'll put this caveat in here that, as a district, this is more for the public because we've talked about this at board, but moving forward, we're working towards balanced budget for this next budget cycle, and so that would be a, a key part of making this ratio look better in the coming years. So as a summary- of making this ratio look better in the coming years. So, as a summary, we met all of our benchmarks, which is a good thing, but there are several benchmarks that point to declining fiscal health, and, and that really, for the board, means that we need to take the steps to balance the budget going forward and to begin to build, rebuild the fund balance. And I think we're all on the right track of doing that. So, does anybody have any questions on that?
So, in one of your next one, you're gonna give us the answer to that, right? How do we balance that, right?
Yeah, we're working on it.
Or, God, that's so loud. How, I know we need to, in good faith, having, we need to change the trajectory and start going up. How many years until we get red flagged by them? And, like, isn't that what happens? Is they, they're sort of like, you are going in a downward spiral, and you can no longer sustain red flag?
Yeah, they, the, the next, if we were to get to that point, we would show up in their report over the next couple of years. As far as how long, I would have to run the numbers myself, but I mean, if we continue to go in the route that we're going, certainly, you know, this year and next year, we'll probably end up in the report.
But we won't get there, because we're gonna add to our balance, okay? Isn't that our whole goal is to?
Yeah, we're gonna make wise fiscal choices, so that we don't end up under the bar. Correct.
I think we have a budget work session planned for next meeting.
Yep.
And there's gonna be some great ideas.
For sure, for sure.
This was informational, so no motion on this one. Thank you so much. And then you have one, one more.
Last one.
The October Student Count Update.
Okay, so with the caveat that all these numbers are best estimates and haven't been finalized with CDE yet, we'll have, like, final, final numbers in January, and so these numbers are subject to change, but these are our closest estimates as of November 1st. So, the district's estimating that Eagle County enrollment will come in approximately 190, 90 students down to budget, and down approximately 250 students to last school year. So, our overall enrollment declined approximately 3.8% this year compared to 2.2% the prior year. After you account for state averaging, this leads to a decline in funded pupil count of approximately 47 students, and this decline in funded pupil count would result in approximately $500,000 reduction in revenue for the current school year, and that reduction we will have to account for in our revised budget in January. And we're addressing that partially through a hiring freeze, as Superintendent Qualden mentioned during his statement. If you look at the, kind of the breakdown that I've attached here, we saw, if you compare it to last year, we saw 83 fewer students at the elementary level for the current year, four fewer at the middle school, and 162 fewer at the high schools. And we are working with any school, so, so the district policy is that any school that's outside of a plus or minus 20 student-to-budget range, we work with that staff on making FTE adjustments in the current year. So, we've already started conversations with several schools on what can be done in the current year to make small adjustments to FTE to get them more in line with budget. Does anybody have any questions on that?
All right. Thank you so much, Bryson. There's a lot of information. And that was our agenda. Are there any feedback or evaluation comments before we end the meeting?
First of all, congratulations on your first meeting, Madam President, as our leader. You did a very good job. So, props to you. Lou, Harry, you guys did well.
Thank you.
You know, your support roles. Welcome to your first meeting. And then, the other thing too is, Bryson, I really like the way you break it down, and so we can actually go into the report and read it, but then you actually put the talking points on the side. Actually makes it a little easier to follow, and, and I don't have to take as much notes. So, that's awesome. I do like that. I do not have anything else, so back to you, Madam President.